And first one to call, roll call please.
Councilmember Nutter.
Here, here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoheimer.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Hilst. Councilmember Fletcher. Councilmember Abel. Mayor Beres.
Here. Having a quorum, we will conduct business. That was four, three. We have now come down to item two, one. It's a presentation of code enforcement. So I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Mr. John Dossi, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to run through a quick presentation, just a little bit of what code enforcement is. I think there's some confusion with building, community development inspections and code enforcement. They do kind of work together hand in hand on a lot of things, but we're going to go through and try to explain a little bit in layman terms, what it's about and how it's working. And we will have some public input at one point in time. I do want to preference the input that it's about code enforcement, community development inspections, not necessarily about any individual personnel. If there is a personnel concern about anybody, then I would suggest talk to the police chief. The appropriate place to be would be to talk to him in private and he, there's processes in place that would handle matters if there is a concern involved there. So with that, I'll go ahead and we do have a quick PowerPoint presentation. I do have Lieutenant Rob Jones, who oversees the supervision of code enforcement. We have Nick McQuett, who is the chief building inspector in community development. Obviously Chief Rainey, who oversees the police department and code enforcement falls under him. And then just myself and Joshua Ray and economic, from an economic development perspective, how sometimes code enforcement or inspections will play into that. So we'll kind of try to cover all of that. This never works for me. All right, there we go. So just a little bit of why code enforcement matters. And just in a nutshell, it's about protecting public health, safety, and property values. Just in the picture there alone, this is probably, this is not a home in Pekin, but this is just a general idea of some of the homes that, and people could say they've driven by and they've seen some type of properties like this. This is probably a common thing that we do address, but it also ensures the fair application of the city codes and ordinances and maintains the quality of life for residents and businesses. Legal authority. Pekin City Code and municipal ordinances provide the legal framework. And we do have our city attorney that deals with our code enforcement. Ethan Mora is on the phone if there's any questions that pertain to this, or Ethan, if you want to chime in. Specific codes cover property maintenance, zoning, health, parking, signage. The city of Pekin did adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, which can be found online. We currently adopted the 2015 code and we are in the process of changing to the 2024 IPMC or the International Property Maintenance Code in the very near future. And Nick McQuett can speak a little bit about that. And it's governed or handled through an administrative hearing process, penalties and provisions for noncompliance as outlined by city ordinance and state statute. What the code enforcement division handles specifically, in particular, probably this summer, probably the highest volume of calls we get are the unsightly lawns and general property maintenance issues. We have nuisance property. We have the illegal dumping and we have the public health issues such as hoarding would fall under that. Signage, parking violations, building safety, and uninhabitable condemnations. And we typically work hand in hand with Nick McQuett's division in building inspections when we're dealing with the condemnations or uninhabitable homes. It's a longer process and that's typically the homes you see boarded up and the cities in a process of foreclosure or obtaining that property or moving to do a demo. There is a difference between community development and inspections. A lot of time, people will confuse, you know, hey, I have to come in and get permits. I don't want to get a permit. I should be able to put that shed on my property. But there are codes required on putting that shed on your property. You are required to get permits, doing electrical work, doing plumbing work, and for good cause. And we'll let Nick talk a little bit about that tonight or answer questions on that. But they do work with code enforcement and engineering hand in hand as it comes to uninhabitable homes or condemnations of homes where structural integrity is involved. And if it's a hoarding issue, we might involve the health department and require certain cleanups and require certain processes to take place on the cleanup of that home, especially if there's mold or other things that need to be done. They will get involved and they will come up with a list of what people have to do to get that house back into a position where it can receive a certificate of occupancy again. Quickly, just how to report a violation. One can call code enforcement at the phone number listed on here of 478-5353. We can also send an email to code-enforcement@ci.pekin-il.us. And I'll let Rob Jones speak a little bit more on the reporting process. And if some people sometimes say, I don't get a call back, we will work with you. But if you do send the email, provide addresses, descriptions. If you have a photo, attached photos, and any contact information so we can follow up on it. Inspections and notice of process. Typically, there's a complaint received that's logged by staff. An inspector will schedule site visits and document the violations. Typically, the owner is notified within timeline to correct, or with a timeline to correct, giving them an opportunity to fix the process. And then a reinspection is scheduled by the owner. And if they don't follow up or call us, then they do go back out typically the day before the adjudication to see if the problem's been addressed and handle it accordingly. Historically, there's five days involved unless more time is requested or needed. And typically, we work with a lot of people on that. Some people choose not to work through the process and we can discuss that a little bit more tonight. Question is, a lot of people ask, or why do we issue tickets first? We did at one time, when I first started here, we did send letters to people first to comply. They simply chose not to comply. And then by the time we went through the process to do the notifications, we were sixty, ninety, one hundred and twenty-six months into a process, nothing was getting done. So what we did is, we started issuing the tickets. They typically have the five days or ten days on the ticket to start the process of compliance. If they're complying, or they comply, typically they change the tickets to warning, depending on what the circumstances are. If they don't comply or they need more times, many times, we will come into the hearing. We will put it on record with the hearing officer and they will grant them an extension on the record to complete the process. So they're already in the process. They're dealing with the hearing officer. And sometimes it takes a little bit more time because people have a really bad situation on their hands and it takes them several weeks, potentially months, to clean up a property. But as long as they're making that progress, we will work with them. But we do keep them in the process through the hearing officer, in essence, so that we have our thumb on top of it to get the property cleaned up. And if they fail to do so, the hearing officer or the city can request that there be a fine levied and that there be an order entered that the city can enter the property and do the cleanup. Several properties are in that. And Ethan, if you hear us and I'm leaving anything out, please jump in and put in your two cents on this. Enforcement options and outcomes. We're always first and foremost looking for the voluntary compliance, achieving it through education and timelines. And again, typically, a ticket will be changed to a warning. If we have to go a little bit further on it, there'll be notice of violations, tickets issued, and fines will be levied if the situation's not corrected. Eventually, it could progress to administrative hearings, liens, abandonment actions for persistent issues, and liens, foreclosures, or properties being deemed a nuisance. So there's a process in place. I know there's been a lot of comments out in the public about some of the fines that have been levied. They deem them to be quite high, but I could assure you that those properties that are giving the heavier fines are the people that choose not to comply. And it got pushed to that. We don't come walking through the door and you just get that fine of a $50,000 fine or a $20,000 fine. It's typically, we've moved through the process. The city's now moving to take possession of that property so we can clean the property up, whether it be a demo or we clean it up and we have somebody come in and do the work. And if we put the liens and we do all the cleanups and the works, we're certainly going to look for the foreclosure and have that property turned over to the city's possession. Administrative hearings and appeals. Once you go through the certain process, hearings provide the due process for the property owners. They get the chance to be heard. There's a, it's through Ansel Glink is the legal people who provide the administrative judge. He will hear the cases. He will make a determination whether or not fines are levied or if any corrective orders are going to be imposed. Any unpaid fines may result in liens or the individual being sent through collections or the Illinois Department of Revenue, we call it the eye drop, where basically, they will go through and they will collect it through income tax returns or any lottery or other funding that's available that the state would have control of. Just the measuring success and goals. We're seeing an increase in voluntary compliance rates, so that shows that it is working. We're starting to reduce repeat nuisance properties year over year. And we're starting to improve some of the community awareness of the codes and reporting options. And again, we just have the resources and some of the contacts for building inspections, code enforcement. If you aren't reaching them, I put a phone number that you could reach me at and I will make sure they get back to you. And I know Chief Rainey's probably going to talk a little bit about some of the numbers, how many calls they actually get inundated with, which might let people know that it does take a little bit of time for them to go through these call logs. So some of our next steps that we're looking at and some recommendations we have is we're going to do a little bit more public outreach campaigns, how and when to report violations. We're going to do a little bit more regular reporting on enforcement metrics. Currently, you can see a lot of that in our quarterly reports that will be posted on our city website or you can call and ask us for that, as well as our annual reports. We will have that posted on our website and we will make that available right now. We are in the process of currently changing over to a new city website. So if you want that information, you can let the city clerk or myself know and we'll be glad to email you copies of that. And of course, we are working to review some ordinance language and looking for gaps into streamlining any of the administrative processes that will be probably upcoming over this next year. Just some examples. Now again, these photos on here are not homes within Pekin. They were just pulled off of the internet. But some of the real case examples have been overgrown vegetation case that was resolved recently, within ten days after notice. That had been an ongoing issue. The neighbor finally had enough called and we were able to go in, take some enforcement action and get the property taken care of within ten days. Recently had a dilapidated garage that was abated through an administrative hearing with the owner complying. And again, the chief or Rob might know a little bit more about the outcome on that, if those were changed, the warnings or not. A repeat nuisance property was brought into compliance after fines and liens. It was changed to a warning. The Motel Six is a great example. We, I forget what the total amount of the fines levied on them, but they were rather significant. We began foreclosure process and the owners actually went out and hired an individual who is now coming in and moving forward with the renovation of that property. They have since removed those signs. They have since started the cleanup process. They've gone through some of the requirements from the EPA for asbestos testing. And we do anticipate that sometime in 2026, they will be open back in business and paying into the motel hotel tax and real estate taxes that the city will benefit from. And then there's a property on Summer Street where we actually were in the process of foreclosure on that property. An investor reached out to us, worked with the homeowner, and we are in the process of working with that individual to restore the residence and bring it back up to code. So we do listen to people, but we do hold their feet to the fire to bring it back into code so it's livable and can get that certificate of occupancy. There were significant fines that were involved in it. That's all I have. If anybody wants to speak, we're going to ask that you come up to the microphone and just state your name so that we have it for the public record. And I can have the fire chief, or the fire chief, I'm sorry. I just, I just really put a dig in on you. The police chief and Lieutenant Jones, answer any questions, and Nick McQuett. But I'm going to open it up. If anybody wants to talk, please come up. Yeah, come up to the microphone.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. My name is Ron Matthews. I've got several properties here in town. And I've had, been involved with code enforcement. I could do a great job. My biggest thing is landlords don't have much teeth. Tenants have all the teeth it seems like there is. A tenant makes a mess and it's up to landlord to clean it up. A real, real quick example, I had a car at a house, residential house. The license plate sticker had expired. I got a ticket for it. I would like to see if the city could work with the owners of the vehicle rather than give the landlord tickets. I can't, I can't get that car towed. I can't make them put a license plate on it. I can't get the car towed off of my property. I would just like to see, that's just one small example. Actually, I've been involved code enforcement several times. We work together. We get it resolved, no problem. I'd just like to see if there's some way that, if there is a situation and the property owner can't get the tenant to straighten it up or do something that the city could help without putting fines on the property owner. I know you can't get any, anything out of a tenant, but if you leaned on them, I think it might help to try and start. Especially, like I say, thank you. I think you guys do a great job.
Personally, I think that's a great question. Police chief, do you want to take this or? Rob?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. One of the hard problems with that is, I know it's tough because the teeth aren't there. I get that 100%. The bad part is, unfortunately, because it is the property owner, those tickets go to the property owner. Now, if it's parked in a public street or something like that, different story, obviously. That gets towed and the owner of the vehicle has to come and fix that problem. Have you ever had any issue with towing vehicles off the lot? Once you receive that citation, that does give you a little bit of legal teeth to.
No, we'd usually rather take care of it by then, but. As I say, you know, you guys, I just want to work, work together, not, not separate.
Absolutely.
And things I've had, you guys, it's been resolved.
I appreciate that.
And I think you bring up a good point. I'm just going to chime in that, you know, I've talked with Councilman Nutter and Councilwoman Phillips and we are going to take a look at some, some things moving forward. I know that she probably said it best, one night is, if it's, if it's the ordinance that's at issue, let's take a look at the ordinance and let's, let's see what we can correct there. So I think you bring up a valid point and we did have a discussion and we'll probably, in the very near future, we're going to go take a field trip and kind of take a look at another place that does it very well and see how they do their process and stuff. And see if there's something that we could change in our process. So we are going to take a look at that.
I appreciate it. If there's anything I can do to help, I mean.
Sure. No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from public?
Hi, my name is Stacy. I live on the south side of Pekin here. One thing that Ron just brought up is kind of something we're dealing with. And luckily, the situation was diffused earlier today. Drew Simpson, code enforcement, was in our neighborhood following up on a complaint. One of them does involve expired plates. We have a neighbor, every one of their vehicles is expired plates. We all know that. One's June 24, one's July 24. The one that was hit on the road in August, an individual hit it on the road in August of '25. The vehicle was parked on the road. Its plate has expired, as I said, in June of '24. So therefore, technically, it should never have been parked on a public road. They were hit and disabled the vehicle. It's still been sitting there and nothing had been done. Drew came today and has put the bright orange tag on it, citated it after I spoke to Officer Grove on Sunday for a separate issue. But this has been four months and an accident report was done at that time. And when the officer did the accident report, he took an evident picture of the license plate and could clearly see it was expired. So that was a good point. Two of their other family members, their plates are always expired. The one that parks out inside of our house, a Mustang, and Drew took the note today to follow up and look at that. It's expired in July of 2024. I just had to renew my plate November 30th. Our plate's in total for our $450 a year. No one wants to pay that, but we do. We follow the law. But the, I have called several times on this. So another issue, the reason that brought this more attentive was the fact that a trailer was hit down the road from us on South Third in front of Owen's home. A trailer that had been sitting there that I had talked to Paul about prior. I also talked about the same neighbors with expired plates had trailers parked on our road. I was informed at that time that could be parked there during business hours, sunrise, sunset, eight to five, such and such. And they were there at that time, but they were there after the hours. When I asked Paul, how do we deal with that? He said, I'm off at that time. And I said, well, does an officer come? He asked me not to bother an officer at that time. So another time I called him again, he did come to my home at nine o'clock at night and ticketed that trailer. He's, and made it clear to me that he had to come after hours. Officer Grove, when he was at my home, mentioned the possibility that there may be a second shift code enforcement for these such violations because who's going to follow up on them being parked there eight to five? But when I spoke to Drew today, he said that was not something that he was familiar with, but he was willing to work overtime for those type of things. Because how else are you going to ticket these vehicles? And we're told not to, I've had a police officer stand in my driveway when I called him on a nuisance charge, tell me I could have been on that drug call that came through, but I'm talking to you. So I feel like we're dismissed by police officers for these miniscule things that they consider miniscule that I consider, this is my neighborhood. I live there. Violations are done. These are, trailers were parked in front of my home where I actually had cleared off the spot for my elderly parents to park. My parents can't park in front of my home. We can't park in front of our home because of their six vehicles at one house in their small capacity home. Yes. And that was the issue. And when we asked them, respectively, went to their face to ask it, it turned into, now we don't speak to those neighbors. In fact, their mother was arrested for battery for hitting me when I was speaking to her. Another neighbor, I'll bring up this, so now pass out. We're talking about tree and yard violations. We have several trees in our neighborhood that are well beyond their age. And every storm, a couple of weeks ago, we had the 20 to 40 mile an hour winds. We don't have a single tree in our yard. And you can speak to your city people. I had four waste cans, yard waste cans out there because I picked it up. Drew told me today, you can call street department. They will help with that. And that's fine. But they were getting hit and thrown and I pick them up anyway. Because I do believe, it's a perspective of where I live, I'm not going to allow trash in my yard. That was, I clean up things, but I shouldn't have to. It should be enforced. So that brought up today, when he, when I was fortunate, fortunate to get home in time to catch him there today, going down the alley to go after the things that we have talked about. And that became the property line in regards to trees and their maintenance. My husband and I cut down trees and my neighbor does the same. We go out there and have to cut them down or the branches tear up our vehicles because our only parking is off that alley. And I, again, was accosted by a woman who threw her Polar Pop soda on me as we were cutting down their branches. Pardon? And she said it was the other, she claimed the property to be hers, but it's not hers. We looked it up online. It was the Humane Society. It's right next there on South Third. You guys can find this all very easily. So we used to take the branches. We cut them up. We even had to use chainsaws to put them in our yard waste because you can't burn in the city of Pekin. I used to even load them in my truck and take them to my parents when I had the capability to do that. I no longer have access to that property now that they passed away. So I've been cutting them and throwing them on their property. Are my five minutes up?
No, you're not on the timer.
Okay.
I just had an answer for a comment that was made for Mr. Matthews. So when you're done, I'll.
Oh, okay. So I mean, I have a lot, luckily, I don't have as much because Drew did. I'm going to tell you, he honestly was awesome today. Speaking to him, I was more informative than any time I've ever spoke. I've spoken to Paul and he hasn't, he's not very receptive of me and does well with me. And Drew was excellent today. And then I was told by Officer Grove too, that Lieutenant Jones, that's the first time I ever heard his name, that I could follow up with him if they weren't doing their job. But anyway, so the alley goes back to the tree thing. So code enforcement today told me it's the same from the middle of the road to each property line and is responsible, the homeowner's responsible. But yet, when the cops came for the woman, we were cutting the trees down, the woman that threw her and supposedly they got her for battery, but I'm not sure. The cop threatened me with trespassing in the alley where I was cutting the trees down, that I had to resort to. We've called Ameren. Ameren has come down to cut the branches that interfere with the lines, obviously. Cable company does that as well. But what about the branches that were, that is our only parking and this is our home that we maintain and they're not maintaining it in the backyard. And then I go back to the front about the two trees and Drew's going to follow up with the two trees out front that are clearly falling apart and somebody's going to be killed by one. And when I spoke to the owner that bought the 1014, which is up for sale, 1014 South Third, I spoke to his son and I said, ask your dad what he's going to do with that tree before you sell this. Next day, he came back to me and I said, what'd your dad said, say? And he said, don't talk to your neighbors. Yes. Because he did not want to, and the seller's pending on this home and anyone purchasing this home should have made sure that tree had to be cut down. And before they're allowed to sell, these kind of things should be taken into consideration. He's making a hefty profit on this property and yet is not held to having to take down such things. Those are two. Anything else I'm missing, hon? Maybe once the conversation goes on, I'll have more to say. I thought tonight was like a city council where I only had the five minutes. So this is.
Not tonight.
Oh, uplifting, so.
It's a town hall. It's a town hall, so we're here to listen and communicate, so.
All right. So those are some things I wanted to add.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Matthews, just to respond about your ticket incident is, so Paul. Mr. Matthews, just to respond about your ticket incident is, so Paul reached out to me, obviously he's watching. He just said, "There is a process for the landlords. It actually works really good. We write them the ticket, they talk with their tenant, and then if the tenant does not move or comply, the landlord then calls you, calls him and gives them permission to tow the vehicle. And if we do it that way, we do not have to get a warrant." And Ethan, is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, John, that is accurate.
Okay, so that, so the ticket is just the process, basically you're notified, you have the conversation with your tenant. If they don't move it in a timely fashion, then you can call, let Paul, Drew, code enforcement know, they will call and then have that vehicle towed. They don't need to get an administrative warrant at that point in time. They could come tow it because you called and told them they could do it. So that's, probably got lost in communication, but that's, that's out there. Our attorney just verified that, so if somebody sues us, I'll just divert it to him. It's on you, Ethan.
You have to have a signage on your property to do that?
For the towing? I don't, Ethan, did you hear that? The question is, do you need to have signage on your property? I think you have to have signage, correct me, Ethan, you probably will on this. I think if you have hired a tow company yourself, that you have to put, provide that signage. Now, I've been out of the law enforcement hat for a couple of years now and I don't know if they can speak to that, but I think if you hire a private tow company, you have a right to do that, but you have to post the signage. Is that correct, Ethan?
At least from what I understand of it, yeah, that would be correct, that like you said, if it's, if we're talking about private companies here, then you'd need to post that.
Is that, do you guys know anything on statute on that?
Are you referencing private property?
Well, apartment, you know, the property that I own. And I have large parking areas. And if I have a vehicle that's untagged.
Can we go up to the microphone so people at home can hear us to ask?
My name's Charles Willis. I own property in Beacon and I have quite a bit of parking area. And there's occasionally, I'll have a vehicle that doesn't have tags, license plate, you know. And, you know, if I report it to the police, you know, I'm the one responsible for the vehicle. But if I have signage on my property and something like this happens, I can have it towed? Or do I have to call the police and have it documented and then go from that?
So I just want to make sure I understand correctly then. So you're talking about an apartment complex, almost run as a business?
I have one location where I have signage.
Okay.
No problem. But I have others that are, you know, there's a tag missing on the vehicle. And, you know, if I report it to you, it comes back on me. So how, this new system that you're stating or have it started, but.
My experience through the years where the apartment managers would contract with, you know, Acme Towing or whomever, you would work out whatever it is, you know, pay them, they come and if they see the illegal parking or whatever the, whatever your agreement says would be a towable offense off your property, they would remove the car, you have the signs there, they know where to go, they could pick up their car. It doesn't involve the police department of the city.
So I don't need to.
I don't, I don't believe so. I think it's a property thing would be on there, that they're on notice that.
So if you mention it to the tenant and he doesn't do anything. So I've made first steps to progress.
Yeah. So I mean, then you could call Acme Towing and say, "Hey, I have a thing." I would keep the documentation, obviously, because anybody could sue anybody, but to say, you know, "We made the notification." I don't want to tell you wrong.
Right, I understand.
So I would definitely check with your own legal, but my understanding and experience and my, now retired law enforcement career had always been that they would have certain things and some, some would require them to have stickers so that way they didn't have people that didn't live there parking there. And if they didn't have those stickers, the tow company would just automatically remove cars. So I, you know, so I'm certain you have that right as the property owner and I think it's something you could just put in your lease.
Okay.
As far as that, then they're on notice when they sign the lease, if they're making any of the violations, you call Acme Towing and they remove it.
The signage that all vehicles have to be operable, have stickers and all that.
Because typically.
You can only put so much on a sign.
Yeah. And in my, again, in my experience, you know, from when I worked in Hanover Park, they would call the police desk and say, "Hey, we're at 123 Main Street Apartments and we just removed this vehicle." So when they do call the police to say, "Hey, my car was stolen," we know that it was towed because it violated whatever your agreement was in your lease and the car was towed by your towing company.
And there's a record of it on the towing truck.
Yeah. And then they, they know to go to that tow company, they got to pay, they pay directly to the tow company. The police or city's never involved.
Okay, thank you.
I'm confused on the discussion Ian and Ron had. So basically what you're saying, because they have rental property, somebody can let their stickers expire on their property and they're held accountable. Shouldn't it be the person that's driving that vehicle and their license and that be accountable? I guess I'm so confused on this. This is another realm I'm glad I got here to hear because I'm frustrated by their parking on my road in front of my house with expired plates and taking up my spots, but you're bringing a whole new light to this situation. So them owning property and somebody allows their plate to expire, they get in trouble and not the person owning the car?
So you have a couple of different things going on. Is, is, one is you have the, what the police officer writes. If you're driving that car with expired plates, you get pulled over, get a ticket. Or if it's parked in the street and the police officer comes by, he can write the ticket for the expired plate. But when it's parked on the property, in particular if it's been sitting there and it's, it appears to be disabled, it's expired, they're writing it under the property maintenance code, which goes to the property owner. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, so there's two different.
There's accountability for the.
There's two different ways. So to the, to his point that Charles brings up.
Yes.
And his point, again, I think a lot of it's how you write your lease. If the, if the landlord writes it in their lease, that these are certain issues that could have your tow, your vehicle towed. The property owner could potentially have that. Again, I don't, I'm not legal, I'm not their attorney. That's something you should have your attorney look at, whatever your contract or your lease is. But if you have it in there, and again, it's been my experience that a lot of the bigger apartment complexes I dealt with in the past, that's what they had. They had something in their lease that addressed the parking and their vehicles and if they were in violation of that, the apartment complex could tow their vehicle. And they would hire private towing companies on, that would come through and they'd look for the stickers or they'd look for whatever. And if they didn't have them, they, they towed them, they yanked them right then and there on a daily, daily basis because that's what they're paid to do. So yes, there's things in there. I don't, I'm not, again, I'm not the attorney. I know that exists. I know that's out there. I would talk to your legal and get that in your contract or your, your lease and then gives you that right. I think Councilwoman Phillips has a question.
I.
Or comment.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on this.
Yeah.
Actually, a question. What I'm hearing is you're explaining the process, but I think we want to know, why did we pass a law in the first place that holds Ron responsible for something that I'm doing when I'm renting Ron's house?
So you touched on a really good point there. You're, you're paying money to Ron to rent that, correct? He's running a business, all right? The problem is, is there are business owners in the city of Beacon that fail to comply with any codes. Shocker, I know.
No.
But that being said, there is not a way to decipher which one to write. The correct way is to address it with the property owner because that is a business that they're running, right, Ron? So it's one of those things that it is, unfortunately, I know it seems like it's not fair, but that tenant is paying the person, the owner, money, all right? The owner needs, the owner has to hold him accountable also.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's one of those things that we can't, we can't go after the individual because it's on that property. It's that ownership. That person owns that property and we're all required to maintain our property regardless if we're renting it to someone or not. Does that help?
No, I grasp the concept. I don't agree with it. I grasp it.
My, my follow-up question that I don't expect you to answer tonight is the burden that we're adding on to the businesses. The average person who has a rental property or two rental properties are not in business. Yeah, they, technically from a tax perspective, those are two completely different activities. Just not qualify as a business. So you're putting this burden on your average person to consult with lawyers and do all of these things that you'd expect of a multi-residential apartment building, like hiring towing companies. And I don't know our cost benefit analysis on this, whether we're expecting too much out of regular people in asking them to add on to the hiring attorneys to evaluate their leases and things like that.
I get what you're saying totally.
But, but I think the, the answer to the question is, from them coming as a landlord and the question is, what are our options or how do we, we do this? So the answer is, it's, it's your lease, it's the language in your lease that covers that and you, you can do that on your own and, and have that reason. And the only reason I'm saying is, I would imagine all of, all the landlords, I would hope, would at least speak with an attorney because there is liability there with that. And just ask the question. I think it's just a simple question. When they draft up, here's the leases you, you use, I, I think it's, it's blind luck if you're just going and printing it off of, you know, legal online and you're using a boilerplate, plate thing. I think somebody needs to look it over, but you know, I don't think there's, there's a huge cost involved in that. I know attorneys can be expensive firsthand, I've heard about it many times. But I, I just think that, you know, if I'm answering your question honestly, you do have that recourse to do that if you have strong language in your contract or lease and they have the opportunity to remove that vehicle on their own. Now, to, to that, Paul's even saying, the law, the law doesn't allow us to hold property maintenance violations against the tenants. It has to be against the property owner. That's why landlord, he says, "We try to work with the landlords with the goal of compliance." So if the owner is trying to comply and is exhausted every way, then every way they, they can then comply, then we can step in and force the compliance with the tenant. So that's, I guess we, we just are going to continue to have to work with, with the landlords and, you know, you seem to have some good experiences with it, but I think we could try to work through a little bit where you guys can have some of the control on, on the towing and stuff. And I think a lot of that has to do with language in your lease and you lay those rules down with them and they know.
My name's Josh Hafleger. I own property here in Beacon and I manage quite a bit of property in Peoria. So I've never been through the adjudication system here. My question is, do you have the same process for grass slash vehicle violations as well as, so environmental violations as well as peeling paint, peeling windows, things like that? Is it the exact same process?
Yes and no. The best way I could answer that is, there, there's two different things we're talking about. We're talking about property maintenance and we're talking about building codes. The paint and everything else is probably something they could speak to as far as the building code violation. And that's handled through usually cooperatively between the two divisions. As far as the, you know, the mowing and the excess alley issues and stuff like that, that's completely written different in city ordinance where it gives us the authority to go ahead and take care of that problem if it's not corrected in a certain timeframe. Everything else pretty much works its way through adjudication. But those weed tickets, the, the alley tickets, those do go through the adjudication process if they're not corrected or if somebody wants to come in and have the hearing officer hear their, their side of the story.
Just like Josh, just so I can be clear on it, because I think he might be talking about a little bit something different. Are you referring to Peoria as far as the peeling paint?
I am. So Peoria, Peoria has entirely, I assume you've researched Peoria.
Yeah, so I, I'm just going to, I'm going to throw out there, I know that our code enforcement, we aren't going and looking for the peeling paint or the torn screens. That's the curb appeal process of that. That's actually a conversation I've had with Councilman Nuttner and Councilwoman Phillips. If we had the correct manning, that they could go out and have their beat and they could go do those things, that's an entirely different process. And, and the way that's typically done is about this time of year, they're going out and they're kind of driving and taking a look at the curb appeal, the peeling paint, the torn screens, the, the falling gutters and, and the things that, that people typically complain about, like, "I keep my house very nice, but the house next door to me is really rundown and it looks bad and makes my property look bad." That type of thing. It affects the valuation of homes. So typically what they do is they go around and you might get a door hanger somewhere between February and March that says, "Hey, we're driving by, we noticed these things. We're, we're making note of this and we're going to give you X amount of time to fix this property." You know, bring it up to, you know, bring it up to code or whatever. That, that's what they're doing. We aren't doing that. We are really truly, I would say probably 99.9% of everything that goes are the tall grass, the weeds, the, the, the homes that are vacant, that have just not been attended to and, you know, parking and, and signs and things like that. They're, they're complaint driven and, and it's frustrating and I know, I know a lot of people get it and to her point is, you got so many complaints about so many things going on, but you have two guys that, they come in for their eight hours and they spend a lot of day on the phone and, and again, the chief will talk to about that, to kind of how their time's allocated. But, you know, that's our tend to get there and that's the conversations we're having and we're, we're trying to move towards that goal. But right now, we're not going out looking for the peeling paint. I'd like to get to that point, but we're not there just yet.
I just wondered if it was the.
Yeah.
Peoria has two different processes.
One for, I have tall grass, I have trash in my yard, I have whatever.
You have that process. And then there's the process of the neighbor called and the roof's flying off the garage next door and, right, that's got to go, that goes through a different process.
Right.
So that, that was my only question.
They're all through.
I'd never been through a process.
Yeah, they're all kind of through the adjudication process, but to your point about the peeling paint and, and the curb appeal stuff, typically it, it's slightly different because there's door hangers, you give the notices and everything, you give them the opportunity to fix it, knowing that not everybody's, you know, you may go to somebody and they got like 50 things they need to correct. You're not going to expect them to go pay for all that right up, but if they're making the process, you're just working with them and you're maintain, making sure that they're, they're moving forward appropriately and they're actually doing something or they don't just, you know, forget that you were there and they have something to do it and you're back out there, you know, six months from now because the neighbor complained now addressing the same issue. So we're not to that point yet. It's, it's the complaint, the tall grasses, the, the, the properties that look like somebody dumped a dump truck there and, and everything else that, that they're trying to get cleaned up, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Well, can I say Chief Rainey or Lieutenant Jones, can you please reiterate on the fact of what the trailer rule is on the road since there was just an accident Friday night on our road? An unhooked trailer was hit by an SUV and thank God they're okay, but they had to be towed away. It was the same trailer that I had complained about many times. Luckily the trailer got removed from the front of our home, talking to Paul at the time. So what is the rules with trailers, hours, unhook, not unhook? What's going to be done about that? And first, second shift, if there are hours, all that? Do we call the cops? We call code enforcement?
Do you want to talk on trailers a little bit or you want?
I, I don't know the hours off the top of my head, but I know they cannot be unhooked and parked on the street overnight.
They could be booked up in the street?
For how long? Yeah, what's the hours on that?
Give me a second. He is.
We'll get you for sure full answer on it, just in general why he's looking that up.
I know, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. I just, while Nick's looking, I thought I'd take the opportunity. So manager dossier is talked about a couple of times. So just so the citizens know how, how our process works, when phone calls come in, they receive a lot of phone calls. So for a long time, we had some issues with people saying we called in, we didn't. So, for a long time, we had some issues with people saying, "We called in, we didn't get a response," all those things. So, all of our calls are logged. We have every call, we have maintenance on what we're doing with those calls, callbacks. But just kind of, so everyone knows, and this isn't an excuse, this is just an explanation. Just to kind of put it in perspective, you know, more towards the beginning of the year, March, April, we were averaging around 150 to 200 code enforcement calls. August, September, and October combined, we had 2,500 complaints with 500 citations being issued. And so, it's just a situation where we utilize the time as best we can. And, but the phone calls, if, at the end of the day, no matter what the situation, if you are not satisfied, or any citizen in the city of Pekin is not satisfied with the service that you're getting from the police department, code enforcement, you're always welcome to call Lieutenant Jones for code enforcement. You're always welcome to call me with any complaints about code enforcement or the police department. So, it's one of those where I just will say, we do have a lot of work. Code enforcement has a lot of work, because when we get, when we do issue a citation and someone calls in, because that's a lot of the calls, is, "I fixed whatever it was that I got the citation for, I need a reinspection." So, then we go out, do the reinspection, most of the time it gets changed to a warning. So, all of those things is a majority of what we do. And as Manager Dossie said, we're almost all complaint-driven. So, if it's one of those things where, if we don't know about it, a lot of times it's not getting addressed anytime soon, I don't have a good answer for you on why the officer didn't do anything that's unacceptable when there was a crash. But generally, that doesn't happen. And so, I would just say, if you have a situation where you feel like the remedy is not getting to where it needs to be, then you need to just make that call to myself and we'll dig into it and see what it is. But I know some agencies, you know, if they receive 50 code enforcement calls a month, like, that's a heavy month for them in some of our surrounding agencies. And there's a lot of reasons for, you know, why these numbers are skyrocketing, but they are going up substantially. There's a lot to do. And like I said, that's, those numbers are all inclusive of just complaint-driven calls, so. But just in general, that's, that's the way that our process works. And so, if someone calls in and says, "Hey, I called code enforcement, they didn't call me back," we can go back through the log and see what the situation was, see what happened. It was that we had the wrong number, was it we didn't have a number? There's just lots and lots of different reasons that follow-ups aren't done. But Rob manages that, and so we keep an eye on that on the regular. It's just, everything that we do when it comes to code enforcement is a large quantity. It's just a lot of everything. And that doesn't include, like, they're responsible for all the demos too, so all that goes into the demos. And so, that's basically just the nuts and bolts of how that works.
And there was only two employees that's currently called, and Steve is no longer there. And I've been calling in for over three years with code enforcement violations. And it went until Sunday night that Lieutenant Jones' name was given to me for the first time, to call and try to get more resolution. And then it coincided with this meeting, so it worked out perfectly for me to come here and speak my line.
Sure, and we appreciate you coming. And like I said, any citizen that's not getting satisfaction in what they believe needs to be done, that's what we're here for. And I'm sorry that that has been your experience, because that's not normally our experience, so. And obviously, we'd be happy to talk to you afterwards or anytime if you have additional things.
Do I give you any information you need?
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's important that, don't hesitate to take it to the next level. And email the chief or call him. And I will tell you, the one thing that does drive me crazy is, I see more people go to social media to voice their complaint instead of calling us, because, because if we don't know. Yeah, if we don't know that the problem exists, it's like, as he said, we can't address it. And I get yelled at, get off social media all the time, but I see it and I'm texting him, "Hey, giving you a heads up, this is out on social media." And they'll address it, but, you know, truthfully, contact him, let him know. I was the same way. But it feels good now because I'm saying, "Contact the police chief." Good luck.
But I'm gonna be very, I cannot partake in social media, never have. In fact, Paul's message yesterday, I said, "I'm calling you instead of calling Lieutenant Jones." I called up a message for him and then ran into Drew today. I do not like to go over anyone's head. I've been a manager, my position's always been, I'm the upper management. And I prefer people to come to me and I try to adhere to their complaints. So, when someone tries to go over me or when you post things on social media especially, I find that disgusting. So, I did call a message yesterday telling him, "I'm calling you again." Before I call, I wasn't going to call Lieutenant Jones, but I went in first.
Right, and I don't know all the circumstances, but I could tell you that Paul is, has been off recently.
That's what Drew told me too.
So, yeah, so.
And I'm not arguing on Paul. I'm just explaining to you that I will not do what you just suggested, going to social media.
No, no, we want, actually, we want you to. We want you to.
Your bosses, I don't. I try to go to the person whose job it is first. And when I feel that's not being taken care of, then I must go to the next step. But I do not go there to begin with, because I do not want that done to me.
And agree, but understand that you don't necessarily know that, you don't necessarily know that somebody's off or somebody might be sick or whatever. If you're not getting addressed, I'd much rather, and I think Chief Rainey would much rather, let him know, because he can get to the right person. It's not, you're getting him in trouble. It's like, there might be circumstances unknown to you, but if Chief Rainey knows or Lieutenant Joan knows, then they can make sure it's getting addressed. Sometimes it's just not heard, because that person's not there.
Yeah, and I appreciate your sentiment, because I feel similarly. Just know, as far as code enforcement goes, we treat it as a team. So, we do have rank and there is a, you know, pecking order, but we're a team. We have a lot that goes on. And so, just because you call me, it's not like you're going over Paul's head or you're going over Rob's head. It's not, we don't look at it that way at all. We want to get the goals accomplished and we want to get the citizens the service they desire. And so, whatever that looks like, if, if you make a couple of calls and you're not getting what you want, you, I'm requesting that the citizens go to the next level, because, you know, it could be something similar to like what we have now. They might be out for a month or two, and you're sitting there fuming because no one's calling you back. And the reality is, is, you know, we're, we're trying to get those messages checked, but it's just one of those where, just so the citizens know, like, we don't look at it like that. We're, we just try to get the job done. And so...
We have boys mail says, "Leave a message for me," or "My supervisor at this number, blah, blah, blah." So, I chose to leave it for him, because I didn't like over.
And we respect that, yeah.
So, I'm trying to be courteous in that.
Yeah, and I totally, and I totally respect that. I just want you to know, if you were to just call and ask for me, it's no disrespect for any of the other people. We're just, because we all work on the cases, we all try to get it done, whatever that takes.
No, it's unlikely, it's good enough. That's why I came tonight, to have some of this resolved, to help the youth, how I feel in regards to what's been occurring.
Great, thank you. Yes?
If it's great, okay, it's on.
There you go, it's on. How are you?
Just, hi, how you doing? Good.
Good. We wanted you to state your name.
Charity Williamson.
Perfect.
I almost said Galette. Still getting used to it. On your point, as far as going over people's head, it's, like he said, it's not. One thing from, with my experience, if all else fails, never be afraid to come here to a city council meeting, because every one of your councilmen work for you. They work for you. Now, obviously, every person deserves respect, so you don't, the complaining, we all, that just goes over all our heads, right? We don't want to hear it. I don't want to hear it. But if you say, "I need help, will you please help me? Here's my, this is what I have, I'm living next to, or what I'm dealing with, I've called, I haven't heard anything." I know that staff is overworked and they have a lot, they're juggling a lot. But I just want to make sure that this gets addressed. And I would love it if my council and my mayor would help me and hear me and see this through. That's what they're there for.
Thank you so much.
And I'm glad that every person in this room is here, because this topic is a huge...
It's big, you're right.
It's a huge part of our community. And I worked with John Dossie to get this improved years ago. My dad was a code enforcement officer. And they were split between code enforcement and he was electrical inspector. And they had no adjudication, they had no teeth, no nothing, no help. And the system that he has brought to this, this community is phenomenal. It's a passion of his, he mean, and, and I think he's done an excellent job. But it's a lot. There's a lot of work to get done and to clean this town up. Some people just don't care about their properties. But that doesn't mean that we, who do care, have to accept living next to trash. But we need to do it in the right way. And these gentlemen right here are doing it the right way. You guys are excellent at your job. And I am so grateful to have you here and to have this team in place, because I remember what my dad went through. And the threats that Paul gets need to stop, because that doesn't accomplish anything. I know if somebody tells me, "I'm such and something, I don't want to do anything for you." But if we all want to be a community and we want to come together and work as a team, we can all achieve a lot of great things. But we have to be able to communicate with one another in a respectful manner. And these people are doing the best they can with what they have. They have an enormous amount of work to do. And that means we have to be patient, but that doesn't mean we need to be forgotten. And that's where your council people, the people you vote to represent you, come in and then they need to stay on it and make sure that that, that work is getting done. And it will get done. I promise you that. It will get done, because it got done for me. The house next to me was the poster child of a chronic nuisance. Poster child. I mean, it was the worst cockroach infestation beam pest control had ever seen. The house has been rased. It's gone. I couldn't sell my home. But once Chief took care of it and we got that chronic nuisance ordinance in place, I got more for my house than I could have ever imagined. But it took, what, six, seven years? Not the process, but we had to put the process into place. We had to get the ordinances and the laws put on the books so that they could do it. But that's the extreme case. That's not the goal. We don't want to tear down houses, we want to rehab them. Thank you, guys, for everybody for being here. And thank you, every single one of you, for what you do every day.
Thank you. It's, we, they are making great strides.
They are.
Just the two and a half years that I have been here, great strides.
Huge.
If I can circle back to parking of the trailer. So, the city code does prohibit parking of trailers on the road from sunset to sunrise. You can park them on the street during daylight hours, but there are distances from driveways and fire hydrants.
And when they do park it during the day, does it not matter if they're hooked or unhooked during those hours?
I don't believe, the ordinance does not really distinguish, it just...
And I'm okay with that if there's a work trailer, because I grew up constructing a neighborhood, a big truck.
Paul reached out and he said that includes being hooked.
Okay.
So...
So, oh, it has to be hooked?
No, if it's hooked or unhooked, if, between hours of sunset and sunrise.
And that's, and I'm fine with that, because I feel it's for a purpose of, during the neighborhood, doing construction, doing that thing.
Yeah.
But after those hours, the one that was just hit on Friday night was empty, unhooked, and had been through several months, sitting on the road, in an individual's car. I destroyed them, thank God they're not hurt. But this has been an ongoing issue with the trailers. And in fact, too, they were speaking of their leasing and their property and the spare plates. Ours are parked on our road, if they're parked there, you can issue, who issues a ticket? Parking is a code enforcement, if there's a car parked on my road all day, which it will be again tomorrow, July 24th plate, it's code enforcement for the company to take care of them. Or is it the police you call?
On a public roadway?
Yes.
You can call either. Either can handle that situation. Now, typically, just as our code enforcement inspectors, our police officers can be very busy at times. But that's not an excuse to maybe miss anything or blow anything off. I'm not saying that's what happened, I'm not sure. But what I will say is, you brought up working eight to five, right? That's a concern for us too, with the code enforcement inspectors. But I can tell you, when we get the complaints in and it's been substantial enough, the code enforcement inspectors will adjust their time to where they are after dusk. A little bit harder during the summer, right, because it doesn't get dark till nine o'clock. But there's also something that I can work with our patrol lieutenants on to kind of educate them. If they can gather the evidence, the police officers respond to it, gather the evidence, I'm more than happy to make the code enforcement inspectors write the citation, at least get the process started. So, it's just something, it's something I need to look at on my end to make sure it's been done correctly.
So, if...
Every day, I need to be willing to work overtime, park my car for hours in order to do that, because we agree that that portion of the job is on the grid.
So, if you have more, come up here, because they can't, the, we're being taped and they can't hear you. I get it, it's something you got to get over. That's okay. You know what, we, we appreciate you voicing your opinion.
I answered for my neighborhood, so that I don't have to be frustrated. This helps confuse me and...
You know, I will say one thing, things that people are saying here tonight. I appreciate you coming forward, each and every one of you. Because when you, when people bring up about, "We're not like other communities around the area," we're trying to be as best that we can for, for our area and not being compared to someone else that we're not as clean or as pretty or, "Why aren't we taking care of things?" But it's, it's people like you coming forward that we need to improve on things. So, thank you.
Yeah, and my point is, I enjoy Pekin, and I'm not...
Oh, I love it.
To discredit any of your positions, any of your jobs.
They've worked very, very hard, you're right.
And when you stood up there and said that, that was never part of my intent. I hope that's...
No, no, it wasn't.
Okay, I hope that's not what you were saying. I did not come here to put anyone on the hot spot or do anything. I'm coming here because I'm experiencing this. Not once, not twice. I don't respond until it's been multiple times. It's been multiple times over several years.
But you want your city to be beautiful and clean. That's all you're asking.
Like I said, you can be poor, you don't have to be trash. You brought up trash. I agree with that. And when people say, "Why are you out there cleaning up the road? Why are you doing that?" I says, "It's a reflection on me living here." And more people need to take that pride. But unfortunately, today's world is not...
Some do not, you're right.
Unfortunately, I don't find very many humans very nice. And so, that's no reflection on you. But then we complain, the people who are living a pretty good life, no criminal records, and we get treated at times, I feel dismissed, I feel like looked at and taken in a manner because we called it. I never thought in any of my life I'd be calling the cops to come to my house. Never thought that in all my life. I grew up clean and straight and never thought that would happen. And I have to, because of the surrounding individuals behind me.
I can't, I'm not gonna say anything. Well, thank you. All right, anyone else from the public? What time, what time is it? We got all night. Anyone else from the public? How about any, you know, since we called this meeting to order, any council? I know Peg came up. Any, any other council? Would the council like to say anything? No? Okay. Sure. Mr. Nutter? You got to state your name. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Dave Nutter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to echo a couple of things that, I've been in this code enforcement thing, as you guys know, quite a while. And from the adjudication hearings, we've talked about a lot of things. There are, we have made a lot of progress. There's been a lot of things addressed, but there's a lot more to be addressed. The issue with the lady with the wreck, I got a text about that the night... The issue with the lady with the wreck, I got a text about that the night it happened. And I know who it is, I know what happened, I know what you're fighting, and it's an easy fix. That's the sad part. Some aren't easy fixes, but you have to have, be it tenants, residents, whoever, got to comply. That's the bottom line. And that's what we're looking for, is compliance. Are there ideas out there that we can improve the process? Absolutely. We've all talked about that and John, like you say, myself, councilmember Phillips, we're going to try to get together and come up with some of those. Some of the ordinances, I'm sorry, are just plain wrong. They need to be corrected.
Outdated.
Or bad.
Yeah.
Or bad, correct. Correct.
And nobody has really brought it up before, but now we have that opportunity to say, "Okay, ordinance X, we need to look at this. This is, there's something wrong here." So I, I know we have it in the strategic plan, that code enforcement is one of the We've started something really good and the number of complaints, I know it because I hear the numbers. It's like, we got to do something. You can't just keep going with the same people, getting 2,000 complaints and trying to respond to phone calls and, "Why didn't I get a call?" Well, mailbox is full. Okay. Or we had the wrong number. I mean, those are kind of simple fixes, but there's long-term fixes too. And I think as we progress through the year as a council, we'll get there, but we need some input too. Nick, Nick feeds me so much information, my head swims sometimes in the adjudication stuff. And there's things in there. I've talked about, why is it two years before we can get anything done? But we know what's happening. I'm glad the citizens showed up to express their opinions. I, I hear it during the week, so it's going to take a team to make it happen. So keep up the good work. We know what we got to do, it's just sitting down and making it happen, so.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate everyone being here this evening and, and it's not closed, I'm just saying, we do appreciate it and we do want to listen to your complaints, comments, concerns. Atta boys, thank you for doing, doing their job. Each and every one sitting up here has their hands full. And like I said, just the last two and a half years, there's been improvement, but we have a long way to go. So please don't hesitate. If one of your neighbors come to you and they're complaining about something, tell them. Call the city. They want to hear from you. I, I have people call me daily. I'm sorry I'm calling you. No, don't be sorry. I want to hear from it. And then when I talk to the city manager, that's what I go through. I go through our city manager because he is here to, the tough calls, and he operates the city on a daily basis and that is, that is his job. So don't hesitate to, to call him, the police chief, as he stated, they are here for you. So please do not hesitate. Anyone in this room, do not hesitate to call one of the staff.
Can I ask you something?
Absolutely. You want to come to the podium?
No.
Okay.
Our alleys paved.
Okay.
And that's our driveway, there's several of them, but that's our driveway.
Oh, okay.
And we, she mentioned, we have to trim the trees from time to time. And we did that and I guess we're responsible from the center of the alley to our property line?
Correct. That's correct.
That is correct. Okay, so next time, I mean, say we call code enforcement because these people aren't cleaning up their yards in the back along the alley, which I know you're busy and you don't have time, well, if we go down and take it upon ourselves, because I got, we got new vehicles.
And you don't want them messed up? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's what we were doing when we went and cleaned up the alley and we had the confrontation with our neighbors because we were cutting branches down and putting it in their yard because they were responsible. What are we supposed to do about that?
Oh, boy.
Do you have power lines?
Yes.
We did everything.
They won't do it.
We called air, we called cable, we've done everything.
And we were told to cut them and put them in their yard, but then when we did that, she got so caught along her-
Okay. So the city manager is going to talk to our Public Works Director, and I just want to say something personal as far as, I have great neighbors and we have big, older trees and it's their tree, but it has reached over and it is dragging on my roof. So I, I just asked them, "Hey, can I cut back? I'm not going to harm your tree, but I just want to cut it back." So, because the squirrels are having a heyday jumping from the tree onto my roof and dropping nuts and it scares me in the middle of the night. So I just, I have great neighbors, so I'm really sorry that you have to deal with this. You shouldn't have to.
Well, but I just want to know, what do we do when these branches get grown up, right?
Yeah. He, he's going to talk with Public Works.
If you're trimming them, I'm going to talk to Public Works and see if we can, we can work out something. I know from time to time, and I, I don't want to speak, I'm not 100% fully aware of exactly how they operate, but I'm going to see if they can swing by. If you call Public Works Director, let him know what you're doing, that you're going to do a cleanup. Can they swing by and do a special pickup? If you, you know, bundle the branches or lay them there, that they could pick them up relatively easy. So I'm, I'm going to talk to him and see and I don't, I don't know if you know that they do that, but I know that we've done it a couple times, but I don't, I don't know what their, their typical operation is.
Hey, John, I just want to add something. I'm by no, I'm the least expert person up here about this. I just happen to be involved in code enforcement in other communities. Just be cautious. I believe in the state of Illinois, you can cut a neighbor's tree that's over your property line, but don't kill the tree because then you are liable for that, even if it is their tree and it's over your line.
No, they do that, but most of these trees are junk, free, freelance trees that happen from bugs falling off.
Yeah.
Creating these junk trees and we're continuously cutting them down.
Do you know what alley they're at?
Yeah, I, I'm very familiar with it.
What is your, what is your alley?
It's on Third.
Between Third and Summer.
Okay.
Third and Summer, between, my husband with his student-
I did get paid years ago, I had to go get a petition and came up here and got paid so much to have, each property owner had to pay.
Before you leave tonight, connect with me, let me get your phone number. One of us will reach out to you in the next day or so and we'll, we'll figure out what we're going to do.
Yeah, but we may be, us and our neighbors, but it seems like when we do, we get habits from somebody in the neighborhood, but they don't want to maintain it, but they don't want us touching their trees either.
Right.
But also, we shouldn't have to maintain the entire alley. We're using our chainsaws, our cutters, our gas, and we're doing it when it should not be. Each individual should be taking care of their own portion of their properties.
Agreed.
And that's why I just want to follow up real quick. Did you explain this to Mr. Simpson today?
Yes, I did.
Perfect. I'd like to follow up with that tomorrow.
I was so fortunate to find him in my alley as I came home today after work and after I went to my father's grave to put a wreath on. A came home and was in quite the mood and was fortunate enough to see him and he was very pleasant. We had a great conversation, we discussed many things. He showed me what he was there for and what he was doing. He typed into his computer the next complaints I had, did all of that.
And I'm glad to hear that because that's, that's part of their job, is maintaining their tasks and make sure they're getting taken, what needs taken care of. My biggest thing is I just want to make sure that that alley's being addressed then because there is a process in place that you guys shouldn't have to do that.
Well, it's not, when I first had this done years ago, I fought with neighbors, those of us that wanted it done because we have to use it, that's our driveway, and those that didn't want it. And then those that didn't, don't want it, they just don't want to maintain it.
So they deliberately allow it to go back?
So they just let it go.
It's deliberate actions.
And there's a process for us to fix that for you. So just give us some time and I'll talk to Mr. Simpson tomorrow, see what's going on.
I know the last three years I dealt with it and I was told each time they came and maybe, possibly told them warnings and such, but I never know that because I don't know citations and what's being done each year. Obviously, I don't think there is because I grew up, like I told you, consequences actions. Nothing's being done, so therefore I'm assuming, and I may be wrong presuming, nothing's being done, so therefore they're not being fined. Because if something's being done and people, it's hitting their wallet or it's hitting something, it, things would be done.
Okay. Anyone, oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Anyone else from the public? Do I have to get in a motion to adjourn or just adjourn? Does staff, anyone want to say anything?
Yeah, I think it was talked about earlier and we, we talked about it briefly too, but, and you're always welcome to go to your council members. All I've ever asked is that if you're having an issue and it's not getting taken care of, just to give a, give me an opportunity to fix it. And so if I don't know about it, then I can't take care of it. And so it's one of, this is all issues, not just code enforcement, police issues. You're always welcome to go to the council. I'm not discouraging from now, just, I do ask that if you give me a shot to take care of it and resolve it, then usually that we can get that taken care of very quickly. So just citizens in general, not just, not just towards Stacy, but just in general, if you have something and you feel like it's not being taken care of, please reach out, give us the opportunity to take care of it. Thank you.
I wouldn't have known, I would have helped you twice in the past. I know you're a chief, Rainey, you've been up here, like, you're with me and all my sisters. I know your name, I know who you are.
And he does a great job for us, doesn't he? I know.
Your dad did as well. And I wouldn't have known to ever come to you and I would not have known Lieutenant Jones if it hadn't been the most recent officers throughout your name to progress this along. Because I've asked who I can talk to to help and I've listed before, I didn't want to go over people's heads because I'm not that type of person. But it comes to a point and so I just was given your name by Grove on Sunday and now got to know, I know you, your name Rainey, but didn't know that you will take care of these issues as well. I didn't want to bother you with these things.
It's our job. That's really, it's a big part of our job, so that's what we're here for.
That's true.
He, he probably deals with code enforcement more than, and that was the gift I left him. He deals, you deal with code enforcement more than the law enforcement side because there's more complaints there.
It did depend on all of those that are hard time in my life. You guys have struggled and getting, cancel my one, they eventually they're dying. I was in a mood and had to deal with them, so I will say, it wasn't all on him, but it's more answered as well.
Well, I, I will say that we appreciate people like you in our community that want